Okay. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no long-winded intros today, but for the sake of the minutes, we'll do a quick roll call. Present, we have Chairman Carl Hinger, Vice Chairman Alan Donnelly, Secretary Janet La Forge, regular member Lisa Temple, and on the phone, we have regular member Niket Kaiser. Absent, we have Alternatives Larry Rushmeyer, Elijah Holing, and Richard Briggs. Our Recording Secretary Dawn, I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Rosie Yellow.
Rosie Yellow is also present. Okay, so right on to business, there's now public hearings. First, we have the review of last month's minutes.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted or have been amended.
Okay.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'll second it and open it to discussion.
Okay, a couple things I found. On the second page, Z dash twenty-two dash fifty-eight, seventeen up two-sroads south. Okay, where it says Vice Chairman Donnelly had paid a visit to the House, there was a little bit left up, left out of that, just to be in more detail, because it did go over a few different things there. Anyways, it drew up a map, discussed the rock wall, the twenty-five to thirty-foot pine trees in the rear, and the location of the septic, which ended up being the hardship, Mr. Chairman. And also discussed the safety code for alarms, perimeter access to the pool, and the applicant spoke an affirmative, that was one thing I found. The next one was on Seven Appleby Farms, Z dash twenty-two dash fifty-five. The hardships, I know we spoke about it in there, but I didn't see it on here, but the hardships were the safety, the septic, and the wetlands. And the, it wasn't Mr. Commissioner Rushmeyer that voted nay, it was the Chairman, yourself, Mr. Hinger.
Yes, that's correct.
So that I saw, I saw it in there. And then the last one, let's see, seventeen, seventeen up two-sroads south, Z dash twenty-two dash fifty-eight. I just wanted to make sure, because I double-checked the video, and we did discuss the hardships, which was the safety and the septic, Mr. Chairman. That's it, everything else looks good to me.
Okay, so amending the minutes to add in the hardships and change
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like that.
Z dash twenty-two dash fifty-five from Mr. Rushmeyer voting nay to Mr. Chairman or Mr. Hinger.
Yeah, and then my comments on Z dash twenty-two fifty-eight and Z dash twenty-two fifty-seven on those two, Mr. Chairman. That's my motion, if you want me to go over them all again, but.
Okay, so is the motion toned in?
I was not present at the.
Nor was I, so.
Okay.
Niket was.
Niket was there, so you two can abstain, and it would be a vote three to zero, which is still the majority of the present members. Okay, so motion to approve the amended minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero with two abstentions. Okay, and then. Correspondence, just right on, oh, we have the, we have the draft calendar for next year. Has everyone had a, has everyone had a chance to look at it? Is there any discussion you want to have?
I've had a chance, yeah, I've had a chance to look at it, Mr. Chairman, and I'm fine with it as is.
I have no problem with it.
I'm not sure how everybody else feels.
Yeah, I think it's straightforward, it doesn't have, we don't run into any issues next year, like the Fourth of July or anything, I don't believe, so I think we can just.
What do you think, Niket?
Um, I'm, I'm good with it, too.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion to approve the calendar?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve the calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the twenty-twenty-three calendar is approved. And on to the big discussion, the ZBA bylaws. Hopefully the last time we need to discuss them. So Niket, you should have access to the PDF from that, okay. Just making sure, it's been a while since we've discussed the.
If you like, Mr. Chairman, I can go over the few little differences that happened, and I think it was June, some discussion of stuff that we had, and then stuff got added into here. This final draft date I had is eight A, but it really only reflects the differences, as far as I know, from things that were discussed in June, the June meeting. I can go over those, or you can go right down the line, whatever anybody prefers.
I don't see a lot of the, of comments, or a lot of the comments I had back in, I think it was July
Yes.
or August aren't reflected, but this probably came out before that, so I don't know. And they, and a lot of my comments were for discussion and not necessarily.
Right, so we can, yeah, discuss those now and make sure they all get added in.
Okay, I just want to say, if I may, I'm looking at two. Two bylaws, one saying ZBZ, which is a typo on my, final July ninth, and one ZBA final August eighth.
The one that was in the packets.
And the one that should be used is Z B Z final July ninth.
I thought it was the August eighth, the July ninth.
I said I sent it to you on the eighth, but it's not, it, the, this is, oh.
Right. We have Richard Briggs present.
Do you want to sit over here and make it easier?
Peter is fine, I'm looking for it.
You can make your choice.
Well, the reason why I think this is that, because we had our, there was a meeting in July, June, July, that was the tenth, it was the tenth, something like that, I have to look at it.
No, no, Alan, I have to disagree.
Okay.
I sent it to you, final July ninth, and you questioned, you had August eighth, and it was the email that was dated August eighth. So the final July ninth with the typo ZBZ is the one we should be using.
Yeah, let me see if, do you have the, yeah, I'm guessing, I'm guessing that's this, where's that typo at?
The typo is, I did ZBZ.
I have a copy of that, but then I have a lot of, like, little tiny changes.
That's fine, we can discuss it.
So is the August one not the updated of the July one? I'm confused, where'd the August one come from?
Well, the August one was after this one. So like, remember the open deliberations, open to public view and stuff, and we had to change that stuff.
Is the July one the one that Lisa, you left comments on?
Yes.
That was the July one.
I have Lisa's comments, Lisa, I have yours here.
Okay.
Your track changes. And if I may, I implemented all of them that could be, and some were a discussion. So if you found typos or in commas, you know, that was all made, the changes were made. But discussions were not, so that's what we're here for. And I think we should use the July ninth, because that was my last one. And if there are changes or typos in that, so be it, you know, I'll make the, I'll fix it.
So it looks like you have it already.
So this, this is. That's the one we're going.
Yeah, the one that says.
Does, do we have?
GBA final July ninth.
Does Niket have access to that one?
I don't know if she does.
Yes, Mr. Briggs, that's the one you should be looking at, July ninth.
If this one.
That's Janet's email?
I don't know.
Yes, I sent it to Alan on August.
Yeah, they're close, but even if she has this newer one, when we discuss this, I'm gonna bring up the stuff in the newer one anyways, so she'll be right up to it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that she, looking at her computer, is able to see what we're talking about and not looking at it different.
Let's see if they show it.
Or if Niket can find it in emails.
I'm, I'm just trying to give. Do we have an extra copy?
Well, I don't think, I think I have an extra copy of this one.
Lisa, I have the August day, but I don't know.
The older one. Hold on, let me go through my pad.
We can make a copy, do we have a copy?
Mine go like draft, draft fourteen, draft fourteen, and they're all over the place. I've got a lot, I have Lisa's stuff right here.
Which I guess is like.
I have the one that's under the paper right now, and I'm looking for Janet's copy from July.
I have it as a document name, Niket, it's just a document name.
Yes, it should be.
And I think I sent it to all of you at the same time.
I mean, I think I can find it and just reemail it to her.
I don't have my computer with me.
I see it.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Twenty-two, yeah, I found it here.
Okay, so we all, all have access to it.
Yes.
That's this guy.
Right.
Where do we want to start on that one? You want to start?
Yeah, well, what, what did, you were mentioning changes, what have you been talking before about?
Well, okay, here's the changes, as far as I know, and we can go over it by line by line. Typo stuff, now this was one that you and I kind of spoke about with the, through the email. You came up with a different location and wording for the continuing education thing, that was on there.
Okay, I think we should start at the top maybe.
Yeah, okay, yeah, let's start at the beginning. I'm trying to find the draft in my emails, if you want to start.
That's, that's the one, Chairman.
Should this read chairperson rather than chairman?
The laws is. I don't have a problem with that, but it's the laws as chairman, but, well, it's our bylaws.
Yeah, it's our bylaws, we can maybe say whatever we want.
I think we have, we have his or hers in there, don't we? I think we put a lot of them in there.
Yeah, I just know that.
Janet probably caught them if we missed them.
Well. I mean, I go through pronouns, I mean, I think that would just.
I think.
I mean, if it, if you think it matters, we could, but that means we'd have to go through the whole document and change.
We have a question from the.
I don't know if it's useful to you, but I just went over some of this with the Director of Land Use on my notes, and she suggested I use chair.
Just chair? Okay.
Well, we'll take her, then, we'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, I, yeah, so that's, I know that for the sake of thing, I don't even remember if it has pronouns like he slash she listed in here, but I know.
Not, not in the law.
Right, well, I know, I know, I'm saying for the sake of like, the town charter, for example, it has a small section in it that says, basically, we're just using he to simplify things, but it applies to everyone.
So, Mr. Briggs, you think we should change it, do you think we should do person?
Well, I, I think it might be better, I mean, as you say, we're gonna have to, I can try to go through it, or chair, I guess, is another way, but just.
Or you could just, I don't know.
I know, I think, I think that person sounds a little bit more personal to.
Chairperson.
I like person.
I like chairperson.
Yeah, I do, too, okay, so that.
I'd be okay with that.
That could be done.
Chair to chairperson, vice chair.
In a way, it doesn't follow the law, I'll have to find it in one twenty-four.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying no or anything.
Right, these are just our.
Should it reflect how the statute says it?
These are our.
Guys, we're not gonna get very far if we get hung up on this.
Right.
I'm not pulling an all-nighter here, so.
I didn't know the getting far was, oh, man.
I would like to have.
Getting through it.
Yeah, I would, I would like to be able to.
I'll make that change, I'll make that change.
I would like to be able for us to get it done and submit something, because then it's not left in flux, I mean, the changes to the bylaws even discussed later on about how we can change them further if need be, so we, I don't think we need to get bogged down in all the nitpicky things which we can just go back and change in another meeting or two if we really want to.
Mr. Chairman, I was, the reason why I thought everyone would get a copy to make it a little bit easier for us, Mr. Briggs brought up the person, we will make that change. If any of the members feel that their paragraph or the Roman numerals need to be changed, we can review that instead of going, I mean, you're right, I mean, Lisa's right, we'll be here forever.
Right.
So I'm making that suggestion. I incorporated all of Lisa's changes, you send me track changes. There were those that were under discussion, which I discussed with the Vice Chairman, and we included it. And I think that.
Whatever he writes gotta go in front of the attorney anyways.
What?
The attorney's gonna review it anyways, right?
Right, right, and I think that basically, and I, I don't know how, I don't want to speak for Lisa, but I think that it looks legal, and that's what we want it to look, we want it to look legal, so. If anyone other than typos, I'll take your copy and make the changes for typos, but if there's anything substantive that has to be changed, that's what we should discuss. Not the typos.
Yeah, I agree, let's, let's get the substantive issues.
I have a couple of questions on, under the inspection paragraph, the first sentence, board members can inspect the premises, the last sentence is, board members are welcome to inspect the premises. Seems like that's redundant, the last sentence.
Yeah, it seems like you don't have the last sentence.
And I think that, I think that Lisa caught that, too, so we could delete that, I'll delete the end.
Okay, it's there.
Then under cancellation of meeting, the chairman may dispense an annual board members' meeting, what does that mean?
I think that's leftover language from the original, believe it or not.
Yeah, I wish we had the original, I tried to.
Believe it or not, I have.
You do?
You can.
All right, well, let's check.
Here's the original, what part is it, I got it right, a lot of chicken scratch on it.
It's under, the cancellation of meetings.
B?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Special, this one right here, under meetings?
Yeah, it says.
Okay, cancel, whenever there are no appeals or applications for special exceptions or variances or other pertinent business at a regular meeting, the chairman may dispense with such regular meeting at least forty-eight hours prior to the time set for such meeting.
So that is from the original.
It was already written in there.
Well, that's grammatically correct, this isn't, because that says dispense with, this just says dispense, and this is annual meeting rather than monthly meeting.
Yeah, so we didn't catch that.
I don't think either of those things are true. I believe once it's posted to the newspaper, the chairman cannot dispense the meeting anymore.
It's probably chairman.
We need not have that, I think, at all, that's.
Well, what about cancellation of meeting?
When I was first discussing this with Fran, he said, well, I need to know, like, today, if you guys, this was a week or so ago, right when I sent out the email to everyone, he said, well, I kind of need to know today if we're having the meeting or not, because I need to send the notice to the newspaper, and then it's either official or it's not happening.
Right.
So I don't.
Should we leave this and change the timing on it?
I, well, I don't know exactly what the timing is, I don't think it's up to.
You said that was about a week ago?
It was, but it depends.
Wait, is there, is this just a practicality of how, how we do things at this own, this apartment? Or is there like a statutory, I don't, I don't know.
I think, I believe it's a legal notice, I think it's an issue of legal notice, that the town has to be alerted that there is a public meeting going on, and that once the public meeting is announced, it's happening.
Yeah, you have a certain amount of days.
Do we know how much in advance that occurs?
We would have to double-check.
We'd have to check with.
It must be at least seven if you talk to him a week ago, at least seven days.
Yeah, I'm sure it was at least one, but we'd need to double-check with land use. The point being, I think that's something we don't necessarily need in the bylaws, because that's sort of their duty and not us, that is just a board.
I hear you, we have no control over that necessarily.
Right, that's, that's a state.
So, I guess this, I'd like to step back for a second and kind of set the stage a little bit more, because I kind of went cross-eyed, excuse me, when I first started thinking about these bylaws, and what are they really governing, and this goes right to the point, right? Is that they govern how we conduct ourselves, and it's an agreement amongst ourselves about how we're gonna move forward, and a lot of, in the old bylaws or whatever our starting point was for this project, it had to do with stuff that we have no control over, and had no business, you know, giving direction on, so I guess, yeah, and I, I'm glad that you pointed that out, because I think this and maybe other stuff in here falls under that category.
It's, yeah, it's things that aren't needed in the bylaws, because, like you said, the bylaws are how we govern ourselves, so when it deals with the other.
But also the bylaws, like, if an applicant or somebody's coming before us, they look and see what our bylaws are, basically how we run the meetings.
Right.
So if we don't have anything in there that says, hey, seven days in advance, if there's nothing going on or whatever, we can cancel the meeting, then they don't know that.
I mean, the only thing that's really pertinent about cancellation of meetings, it seems to me, is in an instance where there are applications, and if for some reason there are insufficient members of the board to meet, or something like that, then.
No, not, no quorum.
Yeah, then you'd want, then you'd want to give notice, right, to the applicants, but if there are absolutely no applicants, nothing to talk about, then we're not gonna be here as a matter of practice, whatever the bylaws say, so it seems to me that the bylaws should reflect that reality somehow, but.
Yeah, so. I think we should check whether that statutory requirement is, if you cancel, well, like, let's say, let's say tonight, we didn't have any, because there wasn't any applicants, right? Carl would have had to let everybody know within a certain amount of time, because people are planning, needs to get stuff going on, so the public needs to know, there's gotta be something. I don't know, but otherwise you're not notifying, I guess, you mean, if Fran, if they put something in the paper, so, hey.
But that's, that's what I'm saying, I think that's a land use thing, that's not our responsibility as a board to notify the public, the land use office does that, so it doesn't need to be in the bylaws, because that's not our responsibility, it's theirs.
If we don't need it, we don't need it.
That's.
So should we take the whole thing out?
That, that was my thinking, and if we decide later we need something, we can add something back in, but I think.
Fine, so what I would suggest is on your copy, delete it.
Okay.
We all agree, then we delete it.
Okay.
You can do, the newer copy has that in it, too.
Right, so I'll just strike.
Wait, you want red?
I want to just cross that.
Do you feel hungry with that?
Hmm, yeah, sure, yeah. Cross out the cancellation of meetings.
Oh, I think we have it on in the second.
The top of the next page.
We have a second paragraph there.
Well, that can get cut out, too, because it's just relating to the first paragraph.
Take out.
Okay, so that, is that it for the first page? So is there any thing we want to talk about?
Take out.
On the second page.
The first, maybe gets a little nitpicking about the first sentence. The board members shall give the public notice of adhering to any owner's property. You're not giving the notice to the property.
Isn't that where that abutting was?
I mean, you're giving, you could say, board members should give the public notice to the owner of any abutting property, not, but you're not giving the notice to the property itself, so it's not, it's grammatically incorrect.
That's, that's three.
Sorry, Niket, did you have something to bring up to?
It's the first.
One second.
I just wanted to confirm that we did change the chairman to chairperson, and vice chairman to chairperson.
Yes, that's, that's the intent, yes, that's the change.
I know that's the intent, I don't necessarily agree with that, and I don't mean to be a pain in the neck, but I'd like to get the attorney's point of view, if it's read one way in the state, in the state law, should it read that way in the bylaws, or it doesn't matter, because if it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
But we're submitting this to the attorney anyway, so if we submit it to them as it says chairperson, and the attorney says, hold up, it needs to say chairman, then they'll let us know that.
Okay.
That is what I'm thinking.
So isn't it the applicant that gives notice?
That's what I was thinking as well, it's the applicant that, the, the board is not responsible for, we're not responsible. I've never emailed the property, the abutting property owners and said, hey, your neighbor's gonna be at a meeting, that's the property owner's responsibility, that's not.
Is that old language?
It might, it.
I think, I think we could have had.
The, the old language, the old language is subtle, I'm sure a lot of it's just carried out.
But it begs the question as to whether we should even have this in there, because this.
Again, that's, yeah, it's the land use office that does it, we have no.
You want me to read it verbatim on the old one, it's right here?
Yeah, let's.
All right, notice of hearings, number one, notice, the board shall give notice to the public and, comma, so far as possible, comma, to the owners of the property facing and abutting the property in question, yeah.
Yeah, so again, old language, but this is another thing.
The applicant has to do that.
The applicant sends notice, the land use office makes sure that the applicant's doing it correctly.
They get the certified mailing receipt.
Right, we here don't make sure.
It is incumbent upon us to notify the board.
Right, so I think that.
We're getting out, out, too?
We're getting out, yes.
Yes, that's, that's old stuff, I guess.
The section A, notice, we are getting rid of.
But then also in B, we're directing the administrative land use secretary to do something, which they're not bound by the statute, excuse me, it's just odd, I, I guess it's no harm in keeping it in, but.
Yeah, I think that, Ms. Alan, I think you had something, you, you, you felt that us getting the minutes of the, all of the meetings, all of the other commissions,
Oh, yeah, that's somewhere else.
would be something easy, would be easier for us, but that's.
Yeah, you're talking, well, we're, we're still at meetings, right?
We're notifying the Brookfield zoning commission, number B, on page two. In the case of an appeal from a decision or order of the ZBA's board members. Yeah, I don't know if that should be in it, too, either, I mean.
It's, yeah, like Lisa was saying, that's telling the land use secretary what to do, which is not something that the land use, the land use secretary is not beholden to.
No, so it's like.
Notice in the Brookfield zoning commission.
And then, yeah.
That's, yeah.
Okay, so we're deleting that, too?
I think.
It's an appeal or decision or whatever. The Brookfield Town Administration shall request a writing that said commission transmit to CIPL results. No, we, we have to have that, so this is, this is talking about, in case of an appeal from a decision or order of the ZBA's, it should be CEO or something, the Brookfield Town Administration. Yeah, this doesn't make sense.
Right.
It doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense at all.
Yeah.
So let's cut it out.
But if anything comes, we're appealing anything from the CEO, we have to have that, we're gonna need that paperwork.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but they would be giving it to us, right?
Right, that's something that, again, the land use office would give to us for that.
Well, is, so there's no responsibility we have.
Right.
All right, is that carried over?
If somebody appeals a decision of this board, then that's.
That's going to court.
That's their, yeah, that's their, right.
Right, that's, so we can get rid of that.
Take that, yeah, sorry.
Turn them up.
Take out.
Well, now we're getting to the land use administration.
Well.
Here goes, Niket goes into this.
This is the, this is moot.
Yeah.
Does any of this matter, does any of section four, the land use administration office, any of it?
If I had to guess, I'd say this was put in there in case somebody else read the ZBA, like an applicant or prospective applicant read the ZBA bylaws. I mean, normally they just go into land use, ask them the questions, what do I gotta do, what do I gotta fill out? If I had to guess, that's why that was in there.
That's probably true, I mean, we have to remember the original bylaws were back from the, does it say?
I don't know if it is on my.
I think it was the eighties or something, like, the seventies.
Now, I was looking for a copy of our bylaws on the ZBA, and it's not there, so that's. Now, I was looking for a copy of our bylaws that, on the Z B A, and it's not there, so that's not there, so I don't know.
So, wha- whatever its purpose was fifty years ago is not of concern anymore.
Yeah, I'll go back though.
Like, maybe that did need to be in there back then, those, before, I'm sure we had all the, you know, all this easily accessible internet and all that. So maybe you needed that at the time, but I don't think we need any of that now.
Now, they really have, uh, this is on the Z B A, they got the downloadable forms and documents, rescheduled G S, mapping, zoning regs, and a meeting schedule.
Yeah, but.
Really, if we have bylaws, it ought to be up here, wouldn't you think? Somebody might wanna read it before they come in.
Yeah.
Hope so.
But it's gone back.
Yeah, I would hope so.
But, but Alan, it's gone back to the seventies, maybe they didn't upload it.
No, I know, when, when we get a new one, they can put it, they can put it on there, so people can see how we do things.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the other, the commissions or macros, as I was saying.
Okay.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, what is the decision?
I mean, I, everyone else agrees, I don't think really anything from section four of the land use administration office is, is needed. Um, the on, well, it's land use.
The A V. I like the A V recordings and the continuing ad, although you had a different verbiage for that, didn't you? Uh.
But again, that's the, but again, the A, A V recordings and whatnot are uploaded, well, do you upload them when you record user?
No, no, I'll tell you, I'll tell you exactly, yeah, I'll tell you exactly where it goes, it goes from there, I bring it home, I gotta throw it on a jump drive, I bring it in the land use office.
The, the. And they upload, so again, it's.
They, no, they bring it up to Dan and I T who uploads.
Well, regardless, it's not the board that uploads, it's, so we don't need it anymore.
No, it is, it is the vice chairman that's doing all the work.
Oh, no, 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 all this is saying is, if, if we do it, they should put it up there, if we don't have anything in the bylaws.
Well, he's the one that's supporting it, but. Right, but they don't need. Well, I'm, but I'm saying, the land use office doesn't need to listen to the bylaws, the bylaws are how we govern ourselves, we don't have the authority to say, hey, we decided you have to do this, that's, they don't have to listen to us.
They might want to, but.
But we don't have that authority, they can say too bad.
Geez, all right, then what about the continuing education, I wanna read this one.
That's some.
Continuing education, all training.
Wait, 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 are you jumping ahead?
This, this is section B of the.
Oh, no. Cause it looks like we get everything else out here.
Yeah, we're still, we're still in, uh.
This quest, this, this procedure for filing.
That, we don't need that.
We don't, but that's gonna be deleted, um, Mr.
Yeah, it looks like.
That's not our job.
I mean, who, who's, which filing to whom is this referring to?
I think this was language from the original, I think it was trying to, I think it was talking to the public, here's how you.
Yeah, well, actually, hold on. Let me go back, where, where is that, uh, notifying Brookfield cast, where's the procedure for filing? Mayor filing appeals, this is definitely from the nineteen seventies, it's, it's from this one. Appeals and decisions of orders of Brookfield zoning commissioner, Brookfield zoning enforcement officer, see, that should be in there, it should say zoning enforcement officer. Uh, appeals and decisions of orders of Z B A's board members, Brookfield zoning, yeah, see, this is, I think it's just misworded. It was supposed to be just copied from here to here, you see this?
Yeah, it's not the same.
But we changed a lot of it, Alan, I mean, we, which.
Yeah, I never.
We changed the language because the language was.
Right, I got you, it's, this should be in there, but I had a feeling someone was wrong, so, appeals from decisions of orders of the Brookfield zoning commission for the Brookfield zoning enforcement officer shall be made by interested parties, I think that stuff should be in there, this is just.
Seem to me there are two things regarding filing, but probably should be in there, one is information to somebody who wants to file an appeal, what do they do? How do they file it, that seems to me a reasonable thing, um, to be in our bylaws, what, what we're, what we are asking of people who wanna file for an appeal, and then, if they then want to appeal our decision, what, what do they do? I mean, they seem, those seem to me two things that would be appropriate content.
I hear you, but I, I don't think that the bylaws are the place for that because it's not binding on anyone but us.
Well, it's, yeah, okay.
That should be something that they should be able to find by going to the town website and clicking land use, and there should be a webpage that says, here is how you file.
So that, that information should be available, but not necessarily in our bylaws, right?
Really, that's my thing.
I think cause we're telling them what to do, is that basic?
That might've been why it was in it, yeah, it was.
Yeah, they were telling them what to do and.
But that's not really.
I like that, well.
The seventies, it was different.
I like the original wording here, I think you have a picture.
You can just go on town website.
Yeah, we didn't have a website.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're saying, you, you don't think any of this original wording needs to be in there, I like it.
I don't, I don't think it's relevant, I think it's talking, it's talking to the applicant, it's trying to explain something to.
Right.
Peo- but the bylaws are supposed to be talking to us as a board.
No, I understand what you're saying, but you gotta remember, these bylaws are public, so it, let's say it goes on the website, and I'm an applicant, I'm like, you know what, I, I got a problem with something happening with the, I can pick up the phone and call, or walk into land use, or I could click up and say, what is it saying in the bylaws here? And then follow up with questions on that, oh, okay, appeals have to be done, this has to be done thirty days.
Shouldn't that already be on the town website, under land use?
It's not.
Well, but it sounds like what we're saying is there should be two separate documents, one is.
Yes.
Procedures.
The bylaws, and another would be procedures.
See, right.
Hmm.
Right, and.
Maybe they squeezed it in back then because it was just the best way to do it, right?
Well, and as you were saying, and they didn't have the website to go to, so it would be like.
Yeah, they probably handed them, here, read the bylaws, and this is how it happened, how it was done.
Right, but, so, yeah, so my thinking is, that was the purpose originally, but as for us discussing the bylaws now, I don't think that's, I think, I don't think we should have all that extra wordage in our bylaws, but that should, like, bring, set us, be a separate.
So the loc- location of applicant's forms, take it out.
Just the whole, the whole section, all section four, we're also making work of it.
Yeah, even, even the duties.
Be a separate document.
I know.
Even, even duties and responsibilities, like, if you don't write out duties and responsibilities, where is it?
Of whom, of us?
No, this is land use administrator law.
Right, so we can't tell them what to do.
We're not in the loss of them.
No, 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 this is just, we're, we're reiterating what they told us, what their duties and responsibilities are.
Naehe.
Go ahead, Naehe.
Naehe wants to speak.
Yes, I'm sorry guys, it's so difficult, I just wanted to say that when we submit the, the updated bylaw, we can explain in the email saying that these sections in the bylaws should be part of another document, you know, like the procedures and guideline, um, it's not part, by, that way it's not, we're not completely eliminating it.
That's a good idea.
They, they show up on the website, um, as informational pieces and not be part of the bylaws.
So in other words, like C, land use, uh, land use, uh, what is a land use?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, so make a, make basically a different informational form in the land used office, say, include A, B, and C on that, in case applicants have any questions.
Yes, yes, we can make a document, we can.
That's a great idea, but we have to clean it up, though.
Right, but we can make that as a separate document, give it to the land use office and say, here, put this on the website.
Right.
Well, I've, I've, I've.
And then it's not in.
I wonder if they, I mean, they're the experts at the procedure, at their own office.
You know, you know, to me, it just has to know that.
Right.
We, we, we think, because we think that they're not part of our responsibilities, but they're informational pieces for the, for the applicant, it should be on the website. And the land use decides, I'm putting it on the website, it's not our decision, it's their decision.
Right.
All right, so, uh, correct it.
There are a lot of documents and forms on the website that applicants can look at, there's a ton of them.
Oh, yeah, there's a boat one, I don't think this is in there, though.
Probably not, but I don't know.
So you're thinking, correct it, uh, because we do have to correct some reverbs on it, or have them correct it, whoever, and then have a separate informational form that people can look at.
If, if the land use office wants to, you know.
Exactly, if they want to do it.
But it shouldn't be in the bylaws.
It shouldn't be in the bylaws, yes.
So for the sake of the bylaws, we should nix it, and if we wanna.
Okay, so what are we nixing now, we're talking, we're, we're nixing.
Are we, are we talking about all of?
Nah, I don't wanna get any A V recordings or the continuing ad.
Land use administration office.
But the A V recordings are not, it's, again, it's to govern ourselves, it's not, the A V recording.
No, it's not, because once we, we make the A V recording, even though we're doing it, or, or any kind of recording, right? Um, it's out of our hands, and it goes to them, and it could take, and I can tell you right now, it's taking three or four weeks, until I make a phone call to see when it gets up there.
So, to the extent we should address the A V recordings, it's to the extent we have control over them, this is, so, maybe something to say is, if we are conducting a recording of the meeting, then the, we will do this with the recording, does that make sense?
Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't give them a time when they have to put it up.
But we can't.
Well, I.
Why not?
Because we don't control them, they're.
We can request, we can request.
Yeah, we can request it.
We can, we can request it, yeah.
Well, we, are we, uh, are we always doing A V recordings or not, what's, I mean.
I have been.
Well, you have been, but what about?
And we always have that recording.
If he's asked that, we're not doing it.
I mean, I don't think we.
Unless I hand it to you, Rich.
Right, but.
We may, we may do an A V recording, and we may not, and if we do one, we may submit it, or we may not, that's not really very bylaw material, I would say.
Right.
Right. Right.
But if we do submit it, we like to have it uploaded in a week, is that fair?
We'll request it, yeah.
We can request it, though, we can't force them to do it.
I mean, I think, I think we shouldn't have.
All right, how about continuing education, you guys might like this. All training provided by the land use office shall be scheduled through the chairperson, chairman, whatever, and due to time constraints, cannot be done at Z B A's regular meetings.
That's something we can keep in, that, that's something.
It'll be the only thing in there. We forgot everything else out.
Basically all that, yeah, basic, the, that seems like something we can keep in there, which is, there's no.
That's fine.
Okay, so, so the thing is, keeping it in there is just putting it under, I mean, you guys are discussing things, but I don't know where it's, that's why I'm asking someone, please, make a draft for me, because.
No, he says, I have it somewhere, I was just looking at it a second ago.
Okay, so.
So four is all out, if, for the exception of continuing education.
And if we're just having continued education, where should that be in the bylaws?
And right, and it doesn't have to be out of title, doesn't have to be entitled either, right?
So we should have land use office and then just one sentence.
Then we'll find another place to put it, but.
We can find, just put it, put that, put a pin in that one sentence, and we'll find another place to sign it.
You want the original intent of that? The original intent is, if we did happen to have any time at all, and all the cases are done, and people wanna do continuing education, we, we decide to do it ourselves, we don't need another person to give us continuing education on the spot during a meeting, that's what was the original intent of that.
To be fair, I just, just wanna let, let you know, Alan, that, that also means that going forward, if you wanna do any of these special training things you're talking about today.
You gotta ask.
We won't be able to do those either, because our bylaws will say, no training is allowed during the meetings.
No, it says all training provided by land used office, didn't say provided by us.
Okay, okay, okay.
Right?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, we're gonna have mandatory, uh, this is twenty twenty-three, right, they have a mandatory four hours a year, like officials have to do, I think that starts.
Some new state statute, yeah.
Yeah, that's the new state statute.
Okay, so that's it for section four, for now.
That's really the point of that sentence, is to exclude unwanted training, quotation.
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, sorry, yes.
For several reasons.
Right, so. So for now, we are striking all of section four, except for the continued education, which we will find somewhere else to slot into the bylaws.
It could be under conduct of meaning.
It could be, let's put, there we go, put it under conduct of meaning, the next section, we're, we're slotting in continued education into conduct of meaning.
That's, that's something where you.
Yeah, I have it here.
You got it?
Perfect.
Lisa, Lisa actually found a good spot for that, Mr. Chairman.
Except as expressly agreed to in writing by the chairman and included in the written meeting agenda, the public hearing shall exclude any internal or external discourse conducted for the purposes of educating, instructing, or coaching one or more board members.
Where did you get that?
I like that too.
I just made it up.
She made it up, I like that too.
Oh, okay, well.
Get that verbiage into the.
You have to get that.
It was in my, my mark up.
Something else.
Hey, under section B.
I'm here to put that under conduct of meaning, right? So like, probably D.
Section B.
Right here, A, B, C, maybe put it in D, conduct of meaning.
Mine looks different than yours.
It's just on section B, it gets on the next page.
Uh, but you're gonna put all that wording right underneath there?
Okay, all right, I have it, I have it.
So another.
Uh, maybe there's some Roman numerals.
Wait a minute. Well, what about right up here, I don't know, you probably don't want it there, you don't wanna put a letter D in and just put it there?
I don't think it matters, that, that would be fine, conduct of meeting, yeah.
Okay, so.
Where is this going?
So conduct of meeting, D, and I'm gonna write.
We're gonna move that to. So we're gonna move this sentence to D of conduct of meaning. We're moving the, so we're striking all of section four, and we're adding this sentence that Lisa suggested.
Right, and, and, right, so, open, uh, hearings open to the public stays hybrid and virtual meetings.
Did you catch that, Naehe?
Voting.
And then continue.
And E, except as expressly, okay, so this is.
Okay, yes, you like that, you like Lisa's verbiage?
It'll be.
Me too, D, we have A, B, C, you wanna write, add Lisa's.
Oh, I just repeated that, right, right.
Yeah, it's gonna be D.
D, right, add, add Lisa's.
Yeah. So we're adding that.
We have, uh, under, uh.
Hi, I'm gonna throw him to the bus for that one, but I don't know.
Okay.
We have under C here, um, second paragraph, as applicants are entitled to five board members, period, so that's not a sentence. So there's a problem there, um.
Oh, you did comma?
Where are we, Mr. Briggs, I'm sorry.
Uh, we are here.
Second paragraph, under C.
The, that shouldn't be a period, it should be a comma.
As applicants are entitled to five board members.
I wrote that one.
Uh, then, then, if for some reason, I, I would strike out the, for some reason, I would just say.
If.
If, there, and it should be there are, not it, there is, there are only four board members present, the applicant must be made aware of the fact, and with their permission or consent to hearing, may proceed or be tabled until the next meeting, so, um.
I think this wasn't my best class at school.
So that's, yeah, okay, so we'll change that.
So slightly.
Grammatic.
You wanna, you wanna read it out, so Janet can write down or?
No, I think I have it, I think, I think, um, after board meetings, it's comma, if, I'm deleting for some reason, and there are as more, are only four, okay, that's about it, all right, that's fine, I got it.
Okay.
I think your dog is making an escape.
Your dog is, want, your, your dog's.
Oh, she wants to leave, come here, give me a bath, she wants to go.
We're almost there.
You have, you have that sixteen month one.
Okay, so, uh, on to administrative notes, any changes you need there? I don't think there is.
Maybe we should have something in here about the decision-making powers or lack thereof of pets who attend the meeting, you know, in case the pet wants to leave.
Think of calling her. Yeah, Gwen.
I second that.
Um, what did I miss?
I just said.
I love you, right?
We should have a provision in here about the decision-making role of pets in terminating meetings.
Number seven, look at A, order of business of public hearings, roll call, hearing of case, chairman of public hearing, executive deliberations open to public view and are FOIA compliant.
So executive needs to go, right, isn't that what we were?
No, I don't think there was actually a problem with it.
What happened to administrative?
Uh, her problem was, we weren't using.
I ran a change.
Okay, okay, all right.
We, we were calling it, we were calling it executive session, it's, uh.
Does it matter what?
This seems like another nitpicky thing like the chair people.
You know what? The, the attorney can tell us.
Right, and we're submitting it to the attorney. If the attorney doesn't like it, they can tell us to change it.
It'll just say deliberations.
Let's, just skip over it for now. Keep going. Let's not nitpick the title. Same thing with chairperson, chair.
Uh, number eight, order of business at, uh, open execu- executive deliberations. I think that came from Richard.
Lawyer, lawyer.
With that, uh, Rick, Rick, I'm. The order of business for members opens ZBA executive deliberations and or regular meetings where there is no public hearing shall be as follows. Pledge allegiance, roll call.
What, what do you mean where there is no public hearing? Because then, in one of the bullet points, it says public hearing.
Well, we have no public hearing.
Yeah, that might be.
So why do, why, why does it say public hearing in the?
Maybe he had something to say.
It's redundant. You should take it out.
I was agreeing with you. There's, there shouldn't be no public hearing on there.
Yeah, so just delete that, if regu- and or regular meetings, right?
Uh, and or, yeah, if, yeah, if they're, we're having a regular meeting with no public hearing, one of the sections of the meeting should not be public hearings.
So Janet, strike, strike where there is no public hearing.
Okay.
What's when it says order of business at open executive deliberations or regular meetings?
What is?
What's the distinction being made there?
I think the first line we should take out where there are no public hearing.
Yes, that's what.
But even without that, you're saying.
And we struck that.
I'm saying.
Order of business at board members open ZBA.
What is an open executive deliberation?
Public hearing here, but striking some stuff. I think we were discussing which to.
Okay, this is.
So we're getting rid of.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's when I got tweaked out there.
I think we're arguing back and forth.
What is the best way? What do you, what do you suggest I'm wording out?
Well, I'm not, I mean, there's a distinction there that I'm not getting because all we, all we have are regular meetings, right?
Right, I don't think there's, we, what is an open executive deliberation?
Come here, baby.
Right.
I, yeah, my, I suspect that we put that in there after one of our heated.
Yes.
Meetings.
Yeah.
But, um, thinking, just clarify it. I think that's an excellent point.
So just have it say order of business at meetings, regular meetings.
Yeah, so, yeah, just get it written.
At regular meetings?
So strike open executive deliberations or. Strike it.
Order of business at regular meetings.
It makes it easier?
No executive.
Executive, it's redundant.
Designation of, uh, well, you want me to go down the line and then?
Open, open is deleted too?
Yeah, just, uh, order of business at regular meetings.
Okay.
They're all open to the public.
Yeah, they're, all our meetings are open, so.
So, you want me to go down the line, pledge allegiance, roll call, review minutes for prior month's meeting, review correspondence, public hearings, continued public hearings, deliberations open to public view, tabled items, new business, formal, less informal discussion, and adjournment. Sound right?
Well, the, the distinction that this doesn't include, at least in my reading of it, is that, so there's a period where the public is invited to comment, and there can be some discussion, then a period where the public is excluded from comment, where it's open, I mean, they.
That's the deliberations phase. That's what we're trying to dis.
The, the only time the public is allowed to comment is during the public hearing.
Right.
Right. I mean, the whole hearing is public, right? I mean, it's not closed.
Right.
Right? But, but, but there's a, but there's a.
Wouldn't deliberations open to public view make sense? So they're deliberations, it's us, it's open to public view.
Well, maybe saying something like, um, de- deliberations among, um.
Members.
Board members, or exclusively among, deliberations exclusively among the board members, so that it's clear that.
Open deliberation among board members? So that's, that's open, but it's, public is not involved, they just open deliberations?
Board member deliberations open to public view. Just covers it all. Right?
Or, okay, so board member deliberations.
Board member deliberations open to public view.
We're adding board member deliberations, just to clarify, only the board members that are allowed to talk about it, not the public. Okay, board member, board member deliberations open to public view.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
If, um, you wanted to throw more in, I guess you could say board member deliberations and voting, um.
I think it's.
Well, it's still deliberation.
One of the same.
Tabled items.
Do we need to go over section nine? It's just quoted directly from the statute.
Yeah, that literally was stamped right in from the statute, the Connecticut statute.
There shouldn't need to be any adjustments there.
Eight-five and eight-five A.
It's just the procedure of designating alternates, which is a quote.
The next one I grabbed a word from you, or a little bit from you.
So I don't think section nine means updating everyone?
I'm good with mine.
It's just a direct quote.
Conflict of interest. Now, this was the change from the fifteen-one to the sixty-one. This I got directly from you. It says, when a member has determined in good faith that he or she has a clear and bold conflict of interest, and a recusal is deemed necessary in any application, comment, the board member may verbally recuse him or herself from, uh, a meeting, or write a recusal letter for one executive copy to the chairman, person, and one copy to administrative assistant. Uh, secretary of land use office will attach it to the minutes of the meeting, replace an official town records. And then here's the other part that we spoke about in that June meeting. This is where the change was. However, a board member who chooses to recuse him or herself from voting shall relinquish the right to question and or comment on the application at hand and can either leave the room or join the public seating. That, that was a change from this one, this fifteen. Uh, that was the one, remember, uh, remember, we, uh, what was it? We, we all watched that class when the attorney, like, you gotta get up and leave the room. If something like that happens, ring a bell.
Well, I, I think, I was making the point once on this topic, that if someone recuses him or herself, but participates actively in the discussion, they're not really recusing themselves.
Yeah, they can't. You're right. They can't.
Right. If you recuse yourself, you're, yes, that's what.
Right.
Yeah, you're out, you're out. I watched some meetings from, uh, some of the other towns, and literally the person gets up and he leaves the room. Right off, right, but the board member gets up, he's gone, and then somebody goes out and gets him when it's over.
Okay, so, uh.
Uh, in Connecticut.
Do you wanna?
Simsbury, I think it was.
Okay. Getting political calls on the election tomorrow?
I can't believe this selectmen have, they've, oh, they must be coming out and voting, because some of them are in the poll line.
So do you like that? And so this.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, this was, that was a change that you had, or suggesting that you had. I think I got it right from your listing then.
I don't remember it, but I'll take the credit if it's good.
No, that's all your verbiage.
So, this, this isn't in the, uh, July version, right?
No, this was, this one is in.
Yeah, this is in the July, yeah, exactly what, what, uh, Alan just read.
Isn't that August version too? I'm looking at the August.
Yeah, it should be.
So, so it isn't though?
Yeah, just look in the beginning.
So there's no changes underneath.
I would change the, this a bit.
What's that?
The, however, if a board member who recusing him or herself from voting shall relinquish the right, so it doesn't quite work, uh, grammatically, I would just say, um, a board, a board member who recuses him or herself from voting shall relinquish the right, blah, blah, blah.
To question and or comment on the application at hand and can either leave the room or join the public seating. Wait, so where, where did you change?
Uh, so the sentence would read, um, a board member who recuses him or herself from voting.
Yeah.
Shall relinquish the right.
No comma, no comma?
Um.
After voting, just give them, take that out.
The right to question or comment on the application at hand, and can either leave the room or join the public seating.
Yeah, so basically take out the comma.
He's, he's saying, getting rid of however.
Okay.
Um, and then.
And just a board member.
The board member who accuses himself from voting shall relinquish.
Oh, okay, just say A, capital A.
Just A.
A board member.
No, it's a board member who recuses, recuses, not recusing, a board member who recuses him or herself from voting shall relinquish the right to question or comment on the application at hand and can either leave the room or join the public seating.
Alright, you know why I put the however in there is because when you're, and, I agree with you, I like the way you have it too. Uh, when you're reading the first paragraph there, it just felt like it flowed, because somebody's reading that and then it's however, you know, like as you're speaking to people, maybe I'm maybe I'm just used to saying it because that's how you speak to people.
But it doesn't necessarily need to flow like that, it's bylaws, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the way I write. So just a capital A.
Just, yep.
In A.
Board member who.
Recuses himself from voting.
Okay, onto the, basically the last page, uh.
That means the bylaws.
Sixteen eleven, I like it.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Richard, you had good input on this one. There are times when amendments to bylaws may be necessary and may be suggested by all regular and alternate board members. All changes must be voted on by regular board members and have at least four affirmative votes to pass and shall take effect at the next scheduled meeting.
My question was, nah, it's been a while, so I have to like get repainted, but what does voted on by elected board members mean here? What if all members vote, would they vote no?
Say that again.
So maybe it's affirmative vote. Must be affirmatively.
No, yeah, I read that on yours. Um, I think that goes back to, remember that first question we had a while ago on, uh, elected members versus alternate members? Uh, does that go back to that? Is that what you're talking about?
It says what, I think Lisa, I have your, do you have your track changing, Lisa? Cause I haven't.
Yeah.
It's just to eliminate the or, right?
Oh, right.
All changes must be voted on by elected board men- board members, comma, have at least four affirmative votes to pass and shall take effect at the next scheduled meeting, right? So if you just put a comma there, eliminate the or.
All changes must be voted on by regular board members.
Comma, have at least four affirmative votes to pass, comma, and shall take effect at the next scheduled meeting.
Isn't that what it says?
No, a few more, a few more.
I think you're looking at a different version.
Yeah, hold on a second. I'm looking at the newer version, which it might have already been changed.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're looking at the older.
Yeah, I'm looking at my.
See, I just.
New expression.
I do agree with Lisa, why he affirmative votes, um, some legally things that we say now too.
Right, that's why you need, well, there's, so there's fi- five elected members, it's just like voting on a case, basically, if you had a law size.
You need four out of five.
You need four out of five.
Yeah, so you need.
Just say at least four vote pass. The word affirmative should be there.
Wait, well, affirmative just means yay, or, you know, yay versus nay. That's what the affirmative means, meaning.
Yeah, four, four votes to approve of the change.
Right. Affirmative.
Yeah. Affirmative.
Um, you know what's funny? Your, your, the or there, I think I changed it, actually I made it and or. So you said just get rid of the or, just stick it in.
Or, no comma.
Yeah, just comma.
Oh, just have a comma there, okay.
Or entirely.
Read the question.
This was the joke.
Yeah, I don't.
Take out.
Yeah, so this. And there, that was a typo.
That was something, yeah, that was something, something last time.
Conduct of hearing, section twelve, what, what is that?
Any, uh.
I feel like that could be taken out.
Yeah, I don't, what is, I don't know what the purpose of that is, but I don't think that's.
I think it's, it goes back to what I was trying to say in the beginning. Let's say somebody ate bread, you couldn't, in the old days, right? The seventies when this was here, you could go online and pull up the bylaws or anything. But if somebody looked at it and they say, oh, look, this says that any interested party may appear in person. I don't know if they know the law. That's what the law is.
Right, so again, it's not.
We're not here to give them the law.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, so it doesn't need to be in the bylaws. That's another thing for the land use office and the website to say, hey, you can have an attorney represent you. It doesn't need to be in our bylaws.
Yeah, so add that to your informational.
Yeah, so that doesn't, yeah, so section twelve doesn't need to be in the bylaws, it can be in, you know.
Which already may be there, just saying.
It, yeah, it could easily be there already. Um, and then order of hearing cases, section thirteen, um.
Are appeals or applications, is that the same difference?
Uh, no, because applications are variances, but we can also, although I don't think we do, or haven't since I've been here yet, we can get appeals from something the zoning commission has shot down, right?
So appeals then?
We are the board of appeals.
I think we can get appeals from that, from the zoning enforcement officer.
So they are two separate things.
Getting fined or levy for something.
An application, everything we've done so far has been applications, but we can get appeals.
Okay, that's right.
If someone dislikes something that Frank tells them, they can appeal it to us. It just, it hasn't come up to us, but they are separate.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the appeals or applications will stay.
Otherwise, people have no place to go. Then they gotta go to court.
Uh, I need to look at the original, cause I think the updated one is, I only have the updated one here, the August one is not.
The fifteen, Janet.
Okay, so I where is it? I liked how it was worded in the August one, I believe, um, or is this the same? Wait.
Some things here and there slightly changed. All those in favor of opposed, this should be heard.
What did you, what was changed, Alan?
Um, okay, no, so this is the original, uh, July one.
That's, this is yours.
My only changes I'd wanna make with, uh, section thirteen are I think B and C should be switched. The communications are normally read in before the applicant makes their case, so that the applicant has a chance to respond.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. I actually had a question on that. Um, is it fair? Is it fair to do it after the applicant, uh, before the applicant makes their case or after the applicant makes its case?
Well, I mean, the, so the written communications are basically the same as if.
A letter from a neighbor or something like that, right?
Like when we ask, uh, if anyone would like to speak in favor or in opposi- opposition.
Right.
So the applicant should have the chance to refute any negative, uh, communi- communications.
They always say that anyways, cause you always, the, they always get the last word.
Right, but I think it would be smoother to read the communications first, and then the applicant can give their presentation and refute the communication.
Yeah, I think you've done it that way.
I know.
Right, but I'm saying that's what should, it should be written here.
From what my experience of this anyway, the sequence typically seems to mean the applicant makes their case.
Make their presentation.
And then we say, if there are letters either in favor or opposed, those are read.
Then the applicant gets to refute.
And then if anybody's here to speak in favor or against, they speak, and then.
The applicant goes again.
Right, so it adds to me to, you know, cause you make the, you make the proposal, this is what I like. Hear what other people have to say about it, neighbors, give them a chance, and then the applicant.
That makes perfect sense to me, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I like that.
So the applicant comes up, they make their presentation, their case.
Right.
Then we can read the letters.
Okay, so we'll keep it as is. They make their case and then communications.
I would change one thing in C, where it says, I would say, any communications in favor or in opposition.
Yeah, or close.
Parallel.
Yes, in favor or in opposition.
O S I T I O N. Did you catch that last part, Menee?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
And then.
I see, as there is opposition in there, the August one.
Okay.
And you like the order of that, right? Application, of the application.
I like the order, yeah.
Um, the last thing I have is.
The laws and regulations shall govern.
The, isn't G redundant? I don't think there's a reason to have G. It says that, uh, board members shall have the opportunity to question anyone who was heard in the case of procedures pursuant to.
I bet you a million bucks that came out of the old one.
Right, uh.
I bet it did.
By written communications, if any, and shall be presented before oral statements are called for. Uh, but board members having the opportunity to question people who was heard is already mentioned in F, where it says board members shall have the opportunity to question. It's just repeating point F, but a more wordy way. And technically speaking, the board members do not have the ability to question people who submitted written applic- written comments, because they're not here. So, especially if they can't question them.
Did you read that last part, Mr. Chairman?
So I think G comes out.
Except for the last sentence, you're saying.
Well, and shall be presented before oral statements are called for, to maintain orderly procedure, each side shall proceed without interruptions.
To maintain orderly.
Except for the last sentence.
Let me read the whole thing again.
Maybe, I, I mean.
Board members shall have the opportunity to question anyone who was heard in the case of pers- uh, procedures pursuant to E and G above, so it's E and G, all those in favor or opposed, and, okay, so you can question any of those. And G, uh.
Okay, I'll make G to maintain orderly procedure.
If any, and shall be presented before oral statements are called for, to maintain, uh.
Uh, it's not.
It's gobbledygook. It's gobbledygook.
It's gobbledygook, and it seems to repeat the other point, so I think if we wanna talk about, don't interrupt, that can just be the head, in the header.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to, um, just include something about orderly procedure. If it's reference to, to each side, then I would think you would put that under C.
Yeah, and you can give some pros. Or in favor.
That'd be in, uh, E.
That'd be in E, right?
Yeah, in E rather than this.
So, uh, or opposed to the case shall be heard, and then at.
Without, without interruption.
Right.
So the last sentence of G will get moved into E, and the rest of G gets taken out.
Okay, without interruption.
Yeah, let's back up, so you're talking about the above by written communications, if any, so that section, move it up to.
No.
No, 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 no.
About?
It's.
Just the last sentence. To maintain orderly procedure.
Each side shall, shall proceed without interruption?
Move that to E.
Add it right into E, alright.
Don't interrupt people.
Hold on, I mean, I like that sucker.
Also, just, uh, maybe a typo in E and F, it should be opposed, as opposed to oppose.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, all those in favor or opposed. In E and F. Okay.
E and F?
Yeah, in E and F, it says opposed, it should be opposed.
Add to.
So another grammatical. Okay.
So E, can I read that one more time, Mr. Chairman? All those, uh, so E would be, all those in favor or opposed to the case shall be heard. Uh, just period it right there, and then to maintain, uh, orderly procedure.
No, no, I didn't put that in.
Without interruption?
No, I just said all those in favor or opposed.
No, no, I know that, but we're changing it.
Without interruption.
Just add without interruption.
Yeah, that's all it is.
Okay.
You don't need the full sentence, just there, they'll be heard without interruption.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
To the point.
When we yell at somebody to shut up, we can say it's in the bylaws.
There you go, there you go, okay, um.
Alright, well, let's just the laws and regulations shall govern.
That is.
I don't know, um, Alan, do you wanna, like, this was taken?
This is just a.
Yeah, but I wanna read it on this, uh, just, I read it on this.
Read it on what? What do you wanna read it on?
Was the purpose?
That everything's covered.
Yeah, well, as we started going through this, Alan and I were talking, and we're like, well, what if? We're, we're just trying to govern ourselves, but there could be a case where these bylaws infringe on existing laws.
That's right.
Saying we're.
We're just deferring and saying, look, if we step over the line.
Follow the Connecticut statute.
It's okay, it's okay, right?
We'll follow Connecticut statute, Title eight, one twenty-four, all sections, subsections, including law sectations, and wham, we went right down the line.
Let's just cover ourselves.
Yes.
Sounds, sounds good, I like it, okay.
Okay, so then that's it.
This has to be written, rewritten, and we gotta go over the whole thing again once it's right.
Well, we've already proposed the changes.
Yeah, but we gotta see it before it goes.
Janet make the changes, and then we just send it over?
This is what I'm going to do.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it though, I gotta make, we gotta go through the whole entire thing.
Sit here again?
No, 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 no.
This is what, this is what I'm.
We gotta look at it, make sure it's dead on.
This is what the secretary is going to do. I'm going to make the changes that we all agreed upon, I'm gonna send a copy to each one of you. If you find a change, or you've, a typo, or a grammatical error, then we'll make that change. It's, this is gonna be simple. It's gonna be simple, Vice Chairman. It's gonna be simple, cause we, we got, we got it down, it's, we got it down, we eliminated a lot.
Thing right in front of you.
That's fine, you, you'll see the whole thing, but I have to say, um, and.
We've worked on it a long time.
Send over to you, you did not change.
Can we?
What's that?
Changed, you changed my document.
On this one?
The July, and you changed it to August.
Yeah, I told you I changed it.
No, you, no, and I sent you back an email saying no.
Okay, go ahead.
So let's promise me that you do not change the original.
I don't care about the ori- the original one, I don't have a problem with, but if, if I have a problem with something that's on this one, I'm gonna say something.
Well, yeah, you could say something, I'm not saying you can't, but you change without letting me know.
Okay, so.
And we had different docs.
So, you, you'll make the changes, you can email the changes to everyone, and we can have them. At the next DBA meeting, and as long as it all looks good, we can just stamp it through. We don't need to have any discussion, cause we'll all have a chance to look it over beforehand.
I like that, Mr. Chairman, I like that a lot.
Session finally send it to the attorney and have it done with. If there's anything that we decide that we're hesitant on, or wanna change down the line, we have the ability to. So I'd rather get it submitted and move away, cause right now, we're still technically being governed under the. Are governing ourselves, and we're not really, we're all ignoring it, the nineteen seventies version. So I'd like to have this submitted, and then if we feel we wanna change a word here or two later, we can do that later. And we don't need to keep coming back to it every single meeting anymore. Does that, that work for everyone? We can?
I, I just wanna say, um, Mr. Chairman, I think it depends on how many applicants we have. I mean, if we have a lot of applications, and they're going over this too, and that's what stopped us from originally.
And maybe most of it.
Let's, let's say that if we don't have that many, we could discuss it.
Right, I, I'm hoping that with all these changes made, and we've had time to hammer it all out now, we won't need to really discuss it. We'll all have a chance to read it before the next meeting.
Okay.
And then, it should all look good, because all here, we've discussed it for the past hour now. And, I, I think we should all hopefully be in agreement when we see the final thing, and not need to spend another hour next meeting discussing it. We can just bring it up, motion to send it to the attorney, send it through, done.
And then let them look at it.
Now, what about these minutes from, like, we've got minutes from all the other, me, I mean, all the other commissions here?
What, what about?
Yeah, I didn't see much of them, I read them.
But why were they included in the package?
They're always included.
They're always included.
Informationally.
Yeah, but not the physical, I mean, usually on the minutes.
Hey, I had one question.
They don't always print them all, they don't always print them all out, I don't.
No, not always.
You could get, it's a link.
I've had them, I, I don't.
Sometimes they're printed, sometimes they're not.
I had a question I wanted to make by everybody, now, now, this is something that we could ask of the, the land use administrator staff. But when they, when they include things in our packet, wouldn't it make sense for the things that are included in the packet to be relevant to the applications that are before us?
Didn't we have that?
Just be here, is it, doesn't that make sense?
What, what is the instance you're thinking of?
What do you mean?
Uh, I can think, uh, I don't know, the last four or five, four or five meetings off the top of my head, we've had things in the packet that don't really pertain. To the actual cases that are in front of us, like.
They're, they're educational materials that we should have.
No, that's good, but at least include the stuff that absolutely is gonna be something that's coming in front of us, pertaining to something that goes in front of us.
Well, they do, right?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Excluded?
Yeah, uh, give me an example, the, uh, one twenty-eight federal road. They didn't have, uh, they included one of the, uh, wetlands commissions in there. But, uh, but the newest one, but nothing that pertained to that application that was coming in front of us, because that was eight, nine, ten months back. And then go back and dig and find, okay, this one went over one twenty-eight, let me, let me read the minutes from that. That one went over one twenty-eight, I'm gonna read the minutes from that, or watch the video. I, I know it might be extra work or something, but if it's something that's coming in front of us.
Uh, yeah, I see, so if they're discussing something at multiple zoning commission meetings, shouldn't we have the minutes from each of those meetings in the packet?
And did we not include that in the?
Well, we did have that in one of them, I don't know if it got deleted, but.
Or was it something that pertains to the?
Maybe the point, or a way to approach that maybe, is, it seems to me when we, when we. Get into the, the particular case, what happens is, well, what happens to me, I'm sort of fumbling around to find. The relevant documents, and sometimes the applicant has another one, and, you know, or I've got one map here, the applicant brings another. I'm trying to look at it while the person's talking. So I don't necessarily know, speaking for myself. If there's other material that I don't have.
That might be relative to what's going on now.
Um, and, and whether I have the, the most updated or the best material. And the way we proceed, generally, that question doesn't come up, except if somebody says, oh, you know.
Yeah, but you don't know if the question comes up, like, I'll, I'll give you an example.
Right.
Um, I try to think of these questions ahead of time, Larry, this is something I learned from Larry. Spend your time thinking about and being deliberate about whatever questions you have ahead of time. Well, I look at old information that's pertaining, if anything has come up, right? To, uh, formulate some questions. Um, and that's just helpful to me, that's just how my brain works on it. Um, that, and it's a bunch of other different things, I don't know, it was just, it's just, we could ask.
Well, I guess one, uh, what I would say, that if, if in the procedure that we go through, if. If simply somebody raises the question, or Carl, maybe you could, do we have all the relevant documents?
Yeah, because that's also could be another problem, right? If we don't have everything, then we don't have enough information.
I'm just saying, if the question, once the question is raised, then we, I mean, it's me, I don't necessarily think about it. Unless someone, unless it comes up as a question, and then, if we don't, then that, that particular.
Put Fran on the spot, though, I mean, I think he has so few that.
There's possible for, I mean, everyone to make errors too, like, did, I, I would say.
I'm, I'm trying to think of a way that, um, information is the most important thing.
Right, but, like you mentioned one twenty-eight federal road, and how, like, they had meetings ten, eleven, twelve months ago, whatever. When Fran was getting the packets together, I'm not sure he necessarily remembered, well, ten months ago, they were in front of the, like.
Not, not unless he sat and he scrolled back through them.
Right, so how, how is he even supposed to know if information's missing? How is anyone supposed to know information that's missing unless someone does the due diligence of scrolling through? Two years of past meetings to make sure.
Not two years.
So Alan does it.
So, so he leaves Alan.
Somebody doesn't, somebody doesn't sleep in that, doesn't.
We need a new, um, a, a new position called zoning board. Zoning board of appeals historian. This case in nineteen eighty-three.
To say, Alan, you do too much homework, just relax. I got you, okay.
Well, I, I love that you do it, cause, um, it's like, oh.
Yeah, it's very obvious.
Not always, well, that's why I was saying, hey, you know, maybe if somebody else could kinda look that up, we'll.
Well.
Take a little strain, but that's okay, I don't mind.
Well, we could, yeah, we can ask them, but it's hard to.
She was here, Mr. Briggs.
But it's hard to know what to ask, like, but.
You don't know what you don't know.
Right, you don't know what you don't know, I can't go to, uh, Fran with every single case and be, hey, did you give me all the information for this one? Okay, did you give me all, like, it's, it's implied you did when I get the packet, and it's busy, yeah.
I think, I think mostly the applicants, I mean, there were a number of them that didn't have the, like, you know, one map, one map, there's six of us.
Someone that's an app, an applicant.
Yeah, so everybody knows we have Amy in there who's really wonderful, she's new, but she's really good. She's really, really good, will help us out.
Great.
And she's good.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
Table these till they're tweaked by Janet, and then we come back and look at them again?
Yes, yes.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table the, uh, bylaws until the secretary gets a chance to make the amendments. That we discussed this evening, and then we come back, uh, next meeting and look at them, hopefully vote on it, and get it over to attorney to look at. That's my motion.
We, we could, if we're gonna discuss this motion, one option could be, if, once we all receive the updated version. If we all agree to just quickly look at the email, and if, it just seems, and it's likely just to be what we, all the changes we made. We could just have an email exchange.
There's only one problem I can see with that.
Yeah.
I don't look through things quickly, and that's my own fault, and I apologize for it.
You get them.
Uh-huh.
I think you get them, I think you get a lot of emails, and.
Well, I'm hard over emails because I'm always out in the field, I'm literally, I check my emails. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, but I'm always out working.
I'll text you.
So I'm slow on that, and I may not be quick, that's all I'm saying.
I'll text you and let you know.
Text.
I'm just saying, unless, the only thing that's, if, if anything, it, it might be a typo maybe, but I think we're pretty much all would read about everything.
I think we're pretty close.
Okay, and with all our eyes, I mean, typos will, you know.
So, we can.
I mean, my thought would be, we, we, I mean, I, we can't.
Must speed it up and get it in there.
Members vote to approve pending our final review via email, so we don't have to talk about it anymore.
Can, uh, Janet, can Janet send it, when you send it to all of us, the updated one? Can you just send it to the town attorney as well, just CC the town attorney on, and then can?
I could do that, if you could trust me, then I'll.
But we all, well, but, no, we're not voting out.
I can tell you right now, I already have a problem with a couple of things that I wanna look and dig into, I wanna compare to the statutes.
Well, that's what the town attorney's for, right?
I understand it, but why not bring it up ahead of time, rather than the town attorney sees it and says, hey, you know what?
Because we're gonna bring it up ahead of time, and we're all gonna come to the conclusion, like, tonight with chairperson and say, well, we gotta send it to the town attorney anyway. Like, so we can discuss, we can find those things and discuss them, but eventually, we're gonna have to shrug our shoulders and say, well, that's a job for the town attorney.
Attorney look at it?
So why not let the town attorney look at it now? And that's not, the town attorney saying this looks good isn't a stamp of approval for.
No, I know.
Still need to approve of it afterwards.
I understand that, I understand that.
But just let the, why'd stall have the town, stall on the town three day?
But I'd like to look at it before, and rather than.
Parallel.
You could both look at it, and if.
What, si- simultaneously look at it and then send it over to the town attorney?
Well, the town attorney's looking at, so we write up the new version.
Do is I'll make the changes, I'll send it to every one of you, you to send back, looks good Janet, no, make this change.
But we don't wanna make changes, like, we don't make substance.
Chairman, I, I, I totally disagree, that's totally unfair. We're, we're taking our time on these, okay, and it seems like at the last minute, you're rushing it, everybody's been working really hard on it. So let's take our time, get the doggone thing right, make sure everybody's happy with it, hey, I'm happy, you're happy, everybody's happy, then we send it over to. I totally disagree with that.
Dog too.
That's just me, my, my, I'm a pain in the neck about this.
Okay.
Cause everybody's worked hard on it.
Whatever. Okay, so, okay, so.
Let's look at it.
I just want this thing off my plate.
Yeah.
Right, so we, so, okay.
I like, let's look at it in the email, and it, everybody, if five people say, hey, you know what, this looks great, if the five members say this looks fantastic, send it right over.
Okay, so.
I'll make that motion.
Janet will make the changes if, and send it to all of us, if she gets the.
Look at your comments, that's it.
Yes, if you get confirmations from everyone, then it looks good, you can send it to the town attorney then.
Like, for example, Mr. Briggs, or you, or Lisa, or, or Alan find something that wasn't changed, or. Then you comment on the email, no, it should be this, we've already discussed everything.
Right.
You want me to just make a motion on that?
Sure.
Call it a day? Alright, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the bylaws over to be amended by the secretary. As we spoke about this evening. And the email can go back to all the members, if all the five members say, hey, it's good to go, send it directly to the attorney, that's my motion.
And otherwise, we'll discuss it at the next.
Otherwise, we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Terry's five to zero, man of us.
Thank you, Dawn.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait.
Oh, dear.
Would you like to?
I second this, or that motion restated?
You want me to restate that?
No, you had one on the floor, and then you kind of.
Yes, mo- yes.